Good afternoon, members, and welcome to this afternoon's meeting of the Lincolnshire Health and Wellbeing Board. My name is councillor Steve Clegg of Lincolnshire County Council. I will be chairing this meeting. And to my right is Claire Raybold, Chief Exec of the NHS Lincolnshire Integrated Care Board, and she is Vice Chairman. I need to start with some health and safety announcements. There will be no fire drill planned today. In the event, however, that a fire alarm sounds, we will need to leave the council chamber through the rear doors and leave the building through the reception to the front car park. We need to wait in the car park until further instructions. And can I please remind everyone to ensure their mobiles and other devices are switched to silent? And when invited to speak, could you please ensure that you switch on your microphone? Otherwise, those attending the meeting via Teams and members of the press and public listening to our meeting online will not be able to hear you. Please be aware that you need to speak directly into the microphone to be heard. And if you wish to speak during the meeting, can you please raise your hand and Claire will make a note. Turning to item one, apologies for absence and replacement members. Jess, do we have any apologies?
We do, thank you, Chairman. We've received apologies from Deputy Police Constable Chris Davison, the Police Crown Commissioner Mark Jones, and Professor Neil Juster. Thank you.
Thank you, Jess. Moving to item two, declarations of members' interests. Are there any members who would like to declare an interest for any of the papers today? Well, if throughout the meeting you realise that you do need to declare an interest, please indicate, and we shall ensure that it is noted. I'd like to now move to item three, minutes of the previous meeting. This is to confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the 24th of June are an accurate, 24th of June 2025, or an accurate record. These can be found on pages five to eight of the agenda pack. Do I have a proposer? Councillor Hume and a second, councillor Cullen. All those in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? Those minutes are agreed. Thank you. We now move to action updates, item four, and we're invited to note the actions circulated on pages nine to 10 of the agenda pack. These are for noting. And I'd ask members who agree if they could show their hands, raise their hands, please. Thank you. That's noted. Moving on now to chairman's announcements. Item five, my announcements have been circulated on pages 11 and 12, and these are for noting. However, I would like to highlight one point, if I may. It has been confirmed by the Secretary of State for Health and Care that Dr Cathy McLean has been appointed as the Chair designate for the clustered ICBs. The current Chair of Lincolnshire ICB, Dr Gerry McSawley, who is present today, I believe, is due to retire at the end of this month. And therefore, I would like, on not just my behalf, but on all members' behalf, to thank Gerry for his leadership and support to the Lincolnshire Integrated Care System and for his valuable contribution to this Health and Wellbeing Board. And Claire, I don't know if you'd like to say a few words?
Yeah, just to note that the Lincolnshire ICB, as you're aware, will be clustering with Derbyshire and Nottinghamshire ICBs. That will come into force from the 1st of October. The chief executive is yet to be announced, but as you've just said, you've just heard from the Chair. And also, my thanks to Gerry personally for the support to me recently.
Thank you, Claire. Right, moving on now to item six, the first of the substantive business items. This is the Joint Health and Wellbeing Strategy Annual Assurance Report. This item can be found on pages 13 to 86 of the agenda pack. This item asks the board to note the updates from the Joint Health and Wellbeing Strategy leads on five priority areas and to approve the Joint Health and Wellbeing Strategy delivery plans for 2025 to 2026 prior to their publication on the Lincolnshire Health Intelligence pub. I would like to invite Alison Christie, Head of Prevention and System Oversight, to introduce the item. And with each of the priorities' leads, they will deliver a presentation on the key points. After each priorities' lead's presentation, I will open the floor to members to ask questions if they wish. Alison?
Thank you, Chair. If members recall, one of the statute responsibilities of the Health and Wellbeing Board is to develop a joint health and wellbeing strategy which responds to the needs identified in the Joint Strategic Needs Assessment. The main purpose of the strategy is to guide strategic commissioning decisions across organisations that deliver services aimed at improving health outcomes and tackling inequalities. Lincolnshire's current strategy was approved by the board in March 2024 and focused on five priorities. This is carers, healthy weight, homes for independence, mental health and dementia, and physical activity. To provide assurance that progress is being made, it was agreed with the board that they would receive an annual insurance report in addition to any specific agenda items. Appendices A to E provide the annual reports for 2024-25. So I'll now ask each of the leads to give a short presentation and to answer any questions on their particular topic areas. We are starting with Emma Tatlow, who's joining us by Teams because she has another commitment, so can't be here in person, to present the update on physical activity.
Thanks, Alison, and good afternoon, everybody. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, yes, we can.
Thank you, Alison, thank you. So apologies, I can't be there in person, but I have my own board meeting at 2:30. I've just got two slides here that I'm going to talk through, and I'm very happy to take any questions afterwards. For those members that are new to the Health and Wellbeing Board, Active Lincolnshire is a charity funded by Sport England, and it's our responsibility to deliver the National Uniting the Movement strategy locally here in Lincolnshire, very much based on local knowledge and understanding of the needs of the local people of Lincolnshire. We know that Lincolnshire remains to be a county with higher levels of inactivity than most parts of the country, and that one-third of Lincolnshire's adult population are not meeting the recommended physical activity levels. We need to work together across the whole system to understand how we can change that and how we can provide access to physical activity that more people can participate in. There are over 2,000 organisations and community groups that are involved in providing physical activity across the county, employing more than 20,000 people. So one of Active Lincolnshire's strategic goals is to support the physical activity sector across the county to enable them to provide safe and inclusive, accessible activities for our residents, and importantly, to meet the needs. So where, for example, we know that there are high levels of prevalence of diabetes, of cancer, of old adults living in the county, we work closely with the physical activity sector to provide them the skills and the learning opportunities to be able to tailor their physical activity sessions to meet the needs of our resident population. That sector is telling us at the moment that lack of funding is one of the key challenges they face because increasing costs in things like energy, salaries, and operating costs have hugely affected the affordability. Most of those 2,000 organisations are small individual organisations, and so they're struggling at this moment in time to continue to offer the activities to the same level. We know that if we can enable more people to be more active more often, health outcomes will improve, we will reduce pressure and costs on the health and care system, we will see greater outcomes in terms of mental health, employability, economic productivity, education attainment, and a reduction in antisocial behaviour. So there's a huge amount of benefit to people being active. We also know that people being active do not just rely on physical activity provision in its traditional form, but we need to ensure that our places and spaces, our towns, people feel safe, that they can easily walk, cycle, scoot, access school and other facilities, jobs, work, employment, et cetera, in ways that mean that they don't have to be reliant on their car. So making our whole environment safe and accessible for people to move around in is really important. Therefore, physical activity has to be built into policy and decision-making. To help us work deeper in this way and to connect more effectively across the system, Sport England are funding Active Lincolnshire to work specifically in parts of East Lindsay, Boston, and South Holland, where physical activity inactivity levels are even higher and health conditions are more prevalent. So we are already working very closely with partners across faith groups, community organisations, venues, facilities, health partners, open spaces, et cetera, to really understand what barriers that exist at community level so that we're enabling those communities to be active and to make choices that see them lead more active lives. The priorities within the Let's Move Lincolnshire strategy, which is approved by this Health and Wellbeing Board, remain. And whilst Active Lincolnshire acts as the guardian to that strategy, we recognise that it's everybody's business to help unlock those barriers that are making it difficult at this moment in time for people in Lincolnshire to lead more active lives. So our work will continue to support the physical activity sector, it will continue to join the dots through the Let's Move Lincolnshire strategy, and we will work together in place to understand how we can unlock barriers and change the way that things work in places that are currently making it difficult for our residents to be active. I hope you can see the slides. I realise I've been assuming that you're looking at the slides as I've been reading through them, but I will pause there and very happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Emma. Do any members have any questions? Councillor Lee.
Thanks, Chair. First of all, there's only a little question to start with. Can we have the slides, please, the elected members? They'd be really useful. Secondly, we've gone out, LCC have gone out to consultation about the One Year Lincolnshire Service, and I totally appreciate that it's a consultation and there are no firm proposals on the table, getting told that. But I do wonder if the money that One Year Lincolnshire spend at the moment was to be spent differently, as has been one of the suggestions, potentially going to younger people or whoever, just spent differently. Would that impact on this strategy if there was less money from LCC to support the promotion of activity and physical exercise? The final thing I would say is, given the information that's in this presentation, can I ask if that was included in the report to committee on the 3rd of December, the joint meeting between Health Scrutiny Committee and Adult Scrutiny, to look at the whole One Lincolnshire consultation response thing? Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Lee. Who's, are you directing those questions to? To Emma?
Yes, please.
Yes, okay, thank you, thank you. Emma, if you could just answer that, please.
Yeah, sure. And if Derek Ward or perhaps Andy Fox is in the room, I'm afraid I can't see, but they might want to comment about the ILS consultation. That's obviously a contract between the ICB and the County Council and one that Active Lincolnshire is not directly involved in. My view is that whilst the 12-week intervention that the One Year Lincolnshire Physical Activity Service offers and the support around that is rallied, and it has an important place for the people it reaches, we need to do more collectively to support and unlock those things that are making it difficult for more people to be active. So what I mean by that is people want physical activity on their doorstep, they want access to it in their communities. Everybody has a different view of what they enjoy and how they like to be active. So it's really important that we support the physical activity sector as well as understanding where decisions around, for example, environmental planning and policy shift could happen to make a real significant change in a way that's very sustainable. So we're trying to hear really changed behaviours and cultures over a long term, you know, over a generation. So whilst an integrated lifestyle service absolutely has a role to play, there is a much wider sector here and a much wider kind of piece that I think we need to consider. And the Health and Wellbeing Board is obviously very well placed to do that.
Thank you, Emma. Martin Samuels.
Thank you, Chair. So if I can answer the second part of Councillor Lee's question and then ask a question of Emma myself. So to answer the second part of your question, yes, we are absolutely intending that the report that goes to the meeting of the scrutiny committee on the 3rd of December is a comprehensive report about what the ILS is doing and what it is achieving. And your comments are helpful in guiding us in terms of what would be useful to include in that. But certainly, the intention is that it is a comprehensive analysis of the, and a proper analysis of the ILS. And obviously, Derek is just to my right and will be scribbling and making sure that that happens. So that's the sort of the answer to the second part of your question. If I can ask a question myself then of Emma, it's really clear in the report that the work that is being done through this, through this strategy makes a big difference for the individuals who take part in that, you know, in those activities. And it is equally clear that there is a significant benefit, you know, a social benefit from the amount of money that is spent on those initiatives, you know, in terms of the benefit that comes from them. But I wanted to just drill a little deeper, and you made the point that Lincolnshire has lower levels of activity in the population than many parts of the country. And you said that about a third of the population are below the level of activity that we would want and hope for. And I suppose I was wondering whether we can show that the activities, the initiatives that are being done are beneficial for the people who are taking part in them. Are we seeing any change in the proportion of the population who are physically active or the amount of physical activity from a population level? So we have the individuals, but are we seeing change for Lincolnshire as a whole? I hope that makes sense as a question.
Yes, I think so. And the data that I quote comes from the National Active Lives Survey, which is commissioned by Sport England. When we start our immersive work in places, we will be able to get much better data and insight about what really is happening at a local level. At the moment, physical inactivity levels hasn't shifted greatly over the last 10 years. And Sport England's view and the reason why they're funding us to work in place is to say, we need to start to do things differently. You know, perhaps the approach that's been taken in the past hasn't been as effective as we would like it to be. And there is a real need to focus on the inactive population. Whilst the recommended physical activity levels are 150 minutes of physical activity a week, we will see the greatest impact on residents and on the impact to the health and care system if we can get inactive people to start to do a little bit of activity. And that might mean zero minutes to 10 minutes to 20 minutes to 30 minutes. That's where the health and care system has really got a significant role to play because quite often those inactive people are presenting at various parts of the health and care system to have conversations with professionals. So we really need to work together to shift those inactive people and to get them to be slightly more active. But it's very complex in terms of, you know, the reasons why people aren't being active. So in short, Martin, I think, you know, the honest answer to your question is no, that data has not shifted for many, many years. You know, Lincolnshire has been at the bottom, if you like, of the, I think probably in the lowest 10 counties for many years. And the reason Sport England are investing so heavily in Lincolnshire now is for that very reason, recognising that we have a high percentage of inactive people, high levels of deprivation, and high levels of health inequalities. All of that data put together means that we need to work really hard together to try and do things differently to understand actually the reasons why people aren't being active, because it doesn't tend, the answer's not always let's put an intervention on or let's put an activity on. So we're going to work really hard to understand the needs of the communities, to shape differently the way that we work and to influence strategy and policy moving forward because we aim to start to make a difference and start to shift those numbers.
Thank you, Emma. Do I have any other questions for Emma? No, in which case, Emma, thank you very much for your contribution today. I'll hand back over to Alison Christie now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next presentation is going to be from Lisa Law, Programme Manager in Public Health, who's going to give the carers' update.
Hello, good afternoon, and thank you for letting me present the unpaid carers' topic to you. It's a real privilege to be here. It's been a little while, but bringing this topic means a lot. Most of you should have read the report, so I'm not going to read it out, but what I will do is just set the scene and just do a few key highlights. And I felt it was quite important just to set the scene in terms of unpaid carers contribute an estimated £163 billion each year to the health and care system. £163 billion, that's a lot of money, and that's actually more than the NHS annual budget. This isn't just a fiscal figure, it's a reflection of the invisible labour and that sustains our health and social care systems. And a reminder for me, when I started working on carers, was that during the pandemic, when formal services paused, unpaid carers didn't, they had to continue. So in terms of over 5 million people in England and Wales contributed to providing care without training, pay, or adequate support, and their resilience is extraordinary. Locally, on a more local picture, we have 70,391 unpaid carers. That's actually lower than what it used to be. That was following pandemics, that's in the census. And this represents 9.6% of the Lincolnshire population. The national, that's, sorry, representing 9.6% of the population, but compared to the national, we are actually higher, which is 8.7. While many provide under 20 hours of care weekly, Lincolnshire has a notable higher proportion in delivering over 50 hours of care a week, placing significant pressure on individuals and families. Supporting unpaid carers, so as we know and as we've already been introduced, carers is a strategic priority for the Health and Wellbeing Board. And we continue to work holistically across the system to try to bring together a collective understanding of what we can do to ease that burden and make an impact on the system wide. So the Carers Steering Group continues to drive this agenda, and it brings together partners to align efforts, avoid duplication, and improve outcomes as a system. We refresh the delivery pan, and that sets out clear actions. And recent achievements include improved carer identification. This was working with some GP practices. We expanded our access to support, so we've got multi-channels via Connect to Support Lincolnshire and a support platform. We've also worked to support young carers and working carers and improving the transition pathways, embedding staff care networks and tech sessions for pilot schemes. We've also have the duty to do a stay survey, which shaped the language and communication of co-production and informed recommendations. There's also been wellbeing initiatives, so we was heavily involved in Carers Active April, and that delivered 80 hours of activity and reached over 17,000 people. In summary, I said I wasn't going to pull out lots of things from the report, but unpaid carers are vital. And during my time working on this subject, I've not met anybody that's told me that they're not valued. They support the system, we know that it's hard for them to identify themselves as a carer, and we know that because it's almost seen as a duty, as a child, as a parent, as a spouse. But we do know that we need to identify carers earlier. And whilst progress has been made with the Carers Steering Group, and we do have a delivery plan which captures actions so that we can be measurable, we do know that there's more and further work that could be done as a system-wide to support the system. And all partners from the Carers Steering Group remain committed to champion, being champions of unpaid carers and to turn strategic intent to tangible and measurable outcomes. And I will take any questions, and if there's a little bit of a gap, I'm sure Anne-Marie will, I've had a little absence from work, so Anne-Marie will help me out if there's questions I don't feel I can answer. But thank you.
Thank you very much, Eliza. I think you're absolutely spot on about unpaid carers and the vital contribution. They do contribute to this sector. Do I have any questions for Eliza? Martin Samuels?
So thank you for the presentation. Clearly, again, there's a huge amount happening, and I may be starting to stand like a scratch record here, but so lots happening clearly of benefit to individuals. What does success look like?
Sorry, I have got my, there's a presentation.
So what does success look like? So we're doing lots of stuff, it's making a difference for individual carers, no question about that. But if we say we have a strategy that is we want, we want things to be better for carers because of the, you know, as you rightly said, the absolutely critical role that they play, how can we, what can we, what can we point to to say this is working for Lincolnshire? It's clearly working for individual carers, but I suppose it's trying to take that sort of helicopter view and saying, what is the evidence that we've got that what we're doing is success for carers? And I'm strugging a little bit, even to sort of quite to think, well, what do I mean by success in this area? But you know more about it than I do.
Okay. So I have got a slide, a couple of slides. So on there, the key messages are around, we need, it takes up to two years for a person to realise they're a carer, and during that time, that can often be only recognised when they have a breakdown. So I think in terms of a system-wide approach, it's about how do we all enable that early identification and use the support and the services out there? And that can be things such as, in our NHS, we know that a big proportion of the staff, I think it's one in three are carers or identify as carers, and they're trying to manage work and go, you know, manage their care and responsibility. So having things such as staff care and networks and support networks, that would be good, all for managers to be really aware of when they have got a carer and the reasonable assistance that could be made, flexible working to help them. The other area that we know we need some really clear is, not everybody wants a service, but people do want information, advice, and guidance at a time that's right and correct for them. And that doesn't always mean just from nine till four. So in terms of accessing information, we want to make sure that we've got a really robust way in which people can get that, which is easy to understand and not full of jargon and doesn't just signpost them to other places. People need easy access to that and not to feel that push from politicoast. We also need to support young carers because obviously with the lots going on in terms of send at the moment and those parent carers, there's a lot of people living in quite dark times, so we need to make sure that identification and support is there as well. We also need to use things such as the Stay Survey, which is the statutory adult care, I can't remember the term for it. It's a stay survey, and it's just about to go out again. And this goes out to a proportion of the carers that are known to adult social care. And what that does is that takes a really deep dive into how many hours a week are they providing support for, how do they feel? And then with the last stay survey, we were then able to have an action plan, which was about addressing some of those headlining issues that was falling out of that. Some of the things that we would like to do for next year is further develop, further develop the delivery plan. It's wonderful having everybody come to the meeting or really, really understand carers and say that they are important. But what we do need to do is for people to contribute to that delivery plan and it not be just a document that's on a shelf. And collectively together, we don't need duplication, and we can share resources because there's a lot of resources available, but people don't always know how to navigate that. The other part as well is around making sure that we, response to the Carers Delivery Group, is responsible for the Joint Strategic Needs Assessment, an early identification. We also have started a communication, to develop a system-wide carers' communication plan as well, so that if we're going to be putting time and effort into Carers Rights Day or to Carers Week, we can share that rather than duplication as well. So that's some of the things. I don't know if that answers or was elaborated a bit more. I'm very aware that there's 170 pages in your document, and I didn't want to take too much time.
If I can come back, Chair. So that's really helpful, thank you. I suppose it's that separation between outcome and activity. So you set out a lot of activity, and I said, there's clearly a lot happening, which is clearly doing a lot of good. I think what I- I think what I picked out from what you were saying, that in terms of outcomes, that key outcomes of carers being identified early, that that seems to make a really big difference, about carers having easy access to information, advice and guidance. And then you talked about the STACE survey that measures their level of wellbeing. And it seems to me, those three things really stood out to me, that if we could have a way of knowing that carers were being identified more quickly, that they felt they had access, good, easy access to relevant useful information, advice and guidance, and that they were reporting a better level of wellbeing, that to me would be, those would be three indicators, I think would be a sense that we're making a difference here. On the population, not just on the individuals that we happen to get, and I suspect that we can measure all of those, all of those things. And I just wonder whether that would be a useful way, you know, in future years of saying, you know, here's all the fantastic stuff we're doing. I mean, no doubt that it is fantastic stuff, it clearly makes a difference for people, it's the question of whether it's making a difference for the population. And it seems to me that those are some indicators that would be measurable, and we could say, well, last year it was this and this year it's that, and therefore there is, you know, we have made progress.
Thank you, Eliza, thank you, Martin, for those very good points. councillor Lee?
Thank you, and I'd echo your comments as well, Chair, about the value of carers.
Thank you.
My comment was pretty much the same, well, question, it was similar to Martin's. I feel that you've got some really good ideals here, aims, but it doesn't feel as if we've got anything in front of us with measurable outcomes to say, you know, right, we wanted to do this and this is what happened, and I wonder if, I don't know what the appropriate time span would be, maybe it's the next annual report to say, well, this, last year now, we wanted to do this, this and this, and this is the evidence that would tell us that we've achieved that to that level. Because we get this in other reports, council reports, you know, outcomes and how well we achieved, or it's performance monitoring, I think, isn't it? And I think that's what I'm asking for, something that's measurable, because otherwise, I think we do these carers a disservice, because we might think that they need to be met, but unless we've actually measured that, we don't know that they are. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. We do have a commissioned service, which we have, which we do all of those measures. That's a contract, and so those figures are actually within this report. But we do people which are known to us, and we have a front door, which is a new design service, so there's one single door so that people aren't having to navigate the system. And then they're measured from the moment they come in there, and then we have all of that performance information and data, and that will help us to decide on those key outcomes and make sure that it is. For this report, we've got the, we've got a delivery plan, which, again, it's possibly not got the figures and numbers in it, but it's actions. And I, you know, we have got the Carer Steering Group next week, we could maybe look at how we could develop some more performance related figures in there which shows or doesn't show progress.
If I could just come back, that would be really useful, if we could have some information brought to committee, whenever you can do that, just to say, these are the figures that we've got, that would be really helpful. Because, like I say, I think otherwise we do these people a disservice if we think we're meeting their needs, we don't actually know it without something in front of us, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, councillor Lee, I completely agree, I think if we can get some sort of outcome measures incorporated for future meetings, that would be very helpful indeed. Anne-Marie Scott?
Thank you, Chair, I think the ideal opportunity for that is the STACE survey, it's done every two years. So I think it would probably be helpful if we actually use that as the way of bringing that sort of metrics and information back to the board.
Thank you, there are no further questions for Eliza Lloyd, thank you very much for your presentation, for your answers to those questions, back to Alison.
Next, I'd like to invite Andy Fox, consultant in public health, to talk about healthy weight.
Thanks, Alison, thank you, Chair. Yeah, so I would like to talk you through the update on the healthy weight priority. People may or may not be aware that obviously being overweight or being sort of in the obese category is, obviously can have health risks for the individual. But at the population level, this is one of the biggest drivers of some of the key outcomes that we're trying to address in the health and social care space. So if people are overweight, they have far higher risk of developing all the major causes, unfortunately, of morbidity and mortality, so death and disease. So the risk of cancer goes up, and the risk of cardiovascular disease goes up, particularly for the NHS, the risk of type 2 diabetes goes up significantly. So this is one of the things that in our population, I think we can all look around at the population of Lincolnshire, how it's changed over the last sort of 50, 60 years. It's the same nationally, it's the same internationally, actually, weight has been increasing in the population. That's partly because the way we've built our world now just makes it really easy for people to take on too many calories and to not be able to burn enough calories off. And the degree to which people have the ability to actually change their life, take ownership of that and address that by taking less calories or exercising more, does tend to, at the population scale, varies hugely. So we're in this situation where people are generally speaking getting less healthy, so that's the point of the healthy weight priority. And I'm going to talk you through some service highlights, and I'm going to briefly mention, because I think it'd be useful, what the overall outcome levels are for Lincolnshire. So actually, I might start with that. Now, this, very similar to nationally, in Lincolnshire, the majority of adults, working age adults, are overweight or obese. And in fact, in Lincolnshire, it's been getting up towards 70%, and in 2021, it did sort of hit 70% of adults are overweight or obese. So they're at a higher risk of developing these diseases. And if you think about it, 70% of our population, we're talking 500,000 people in Lincolnshire, or that's a guesstimate, with 800,000 population, this is significant. And this is a massive driver of the costs and the ill health that we are trusted to dealing with. Almost more importantly, in many senses, this is a problem for our children, young people. And childhood obesity is an area we're all aware, I think, has again been an increasing risk and issue for us. And we're now at the situation in Lincolnshire where roughly a third, or so it's like over a third, of children in year six are overweight or obese. And that is, well, I say roughly a third, it's nearly 40%, so it's higher than the England levels. And we tend to see that in adult obesity and overweight as well, it's higher in Lincolnshire than it is. It's strongly correlated with, the technical term, socioeconomic deprivation, it basically means that the more agency and ability you have as an individual to change your own life, the easier, on average, that that population will find it to make positive changes. Basically, not everybody needs help, some people need a lot of help in order to change things in their life that make a positive difference. So on that note, we'll go to the substance of the update, and we have several services which are addressed and designed to help people who can't otherwise help themselves to make these key changes. And of course, people will be aware of the history of the Integrated Lifestyle Service, we have adult weight management as one of the key pathways there. And I'm going to not read out these slides, that would be against my principles and will probably bore you. So I'll pick out some key stats on each of these. And what I'd like to point out on, for the adult weight management pathway, is that NICE stipulates for a good pathway, 30% of people who access it should see success in terms of that 5% drop in body weight. In Lincolnshire, we're hitting 46%, it's significantly outperforming the standard of weight management programmes nationally. Now, the NHS, obviously, our NHS colleagues deliver a lot in this space, as you'd expect. We have, there's a National Diabetes Prevention Programme, which NHS Lincolnshire Commission. And indeed, this has a very high completion rate compared to the National NHS Key Performance Indicator as well, where we're seeing 64% of people completing the programme with an average weight loss of 3.8 kilos, again, exceeding the National Key Performance Indicator. These are basically indicators that these services are performing well, against a challenging background in Lincolnshire, we have strong service delivery. Other highlights, Lincolnshire's, LCC has a food education team, again, really focusing on that childhood obesity space, trying to make sure our kids, kids obviously need help to get these things right, you know, certainly my kids can't always be trusted to make the healthiest food choices. Although one's gone off to university now and seems sending us photos of the meals he's cooking and doing very well. The other one would just eat loads of sweets if they're given half the chance. We do have 22 schools engaged with this sugar reduction programme to feed the sweet. And importantly, all early years settings are getting support through this early years food and packed lunch policy. And again, just some great work tying in with the holiday activities and food programme as well, so the provision of healthy food at holidays. So again, another, I think, a positive story in terms of the way the service is delivering, even if it's a challenging background. So if you move to the next slide, please. Thank you, and Glogie Energy is that element of the Integrated Lifestyle Service, it's a bit of a mouthful, that one, where we are directly supporting children and families who, again, otherwise would find it really challenging to increase their physical activity and their fruit and vegetable intake and reduce their overweight and obesity. And I think this is really positive because essentially what we've seen is far higher rates of children reducing their weight than expected necessarily in other programmes, so we can see two thirds of children who have done this have actually reduced their weight. That's not maintained their weight, stopped increasing weight, but actually reduced the weight. And 75% of parents on this programme have increased their physical activity levels, and as you can see, nearly two thirds their fruit and vegetables. And this is heavily targeted at those who need the most support. This is not for the people who can really take their own personal responsibility and help their families better, this is for the people who are going to struggle with that. And it is, well, these stats show that it is, it's getting the outcomes that we wanted to. NHS digital weight management, this is obviously a direction of travel, nationally, locally, digital provision of these tools is going to be key going forward. And the NHS are nationally rolling out this digital weight management programme. And as you can see, we are getting some referrals through in Lincolnshire and the rate of that has picked up. So this was quite new, I would say, last year, so the numbers are still relatively small, but it's certainly going to be a key focus for NHS colleagues, building the uptake of that. And basically where people would benefit from a digital resource here, rather than the face to face resource that the Integrated Lifestyle Service and other services would offer, this will be for them, and we are seeing it, seeing it be taken up more and more and more, which is certainly something nationally, NHS are driving hard. Finally, NHS health checks, you can see everybody over the age of 45 essentially is invited to take up an NHS health check, one every five years, which is why it's over 45. People can be invited over 40. And we do have a high acceptance rate of that in Lincolnshire, again, we have a pretty high performing health check service, this is that sort of body MOT that people can get amongst the 15 best ICB areas. So to summarise, I think we have some high performing services in Lincolnshire which I'm very pleased about. They do appear to be making a difference, obviously, it's against a backdrop of obesity and overweight in the wider population in England increasing. And inequalities in childhood weight increasing significantly as well. What I would say, there's been some indications over the last two or three years in a reduction in the percentage of children showing overweight or obese at year six in Lincolnshire, as well as nationally, I admit, but that's some rare good news in this space. And although I'd never want to say it's the result of just one of our services, clearly, things can change in this area, and that's some indication. And indeed vindication for the hard work that NHS colleagues and our teams and the whole of our population have been doing. Happily take questions, thank you.
Thank you, Andy, are there any questions for Andy Fox, councillor Lee?
Not a question, but just to say, just for the chamber, to ask for it to be noted for the record, actually. Andy's comments about the success of the high performing one U Lincolnshire service, the Integrated Lifestyle Service. When we come to scrutinise this on the 3rd of December, this sort of confirmation of the success needs to be in that report. It really, really does, because we're going to start making decisions about changing things that aren't broken. You know, there needs to be some really strong justification for that, because I think it's an outstanding service, the Integrated Lifestyle Service. And I understand why people are looking at it, but there are suggestions that changes will be made, and I just think if it's not broken, why try and fix it? Thank you.
Councillor Nanostat?
Thank you, a couple of questions and a point to make. First of all, in the last year, this group has discussed possibility of looking at a campaign to reduce consumption of ultra processed food. Now, it hasn't actually got on to that, so at what time is that going to take place? Do you want me to ask the questions together?
How would you like to, would you take them together?
Shall we, yes, I'd have to take them together.
Yeah, the second point is, under the food education team, it mentions measuring progress by schools offering better quality, more nutritious food that is compliant with school food standards. Now, that implies that schools aren't reaching the required standard of food they offer. Can you give us an indication of what can be done, is there any sanction against them for not meeting that, and roughly how many, what percentage of schools meet that? The third point is really to, on the Integrated Lifestyle Adult Weight Management, which I think has been really good. And it's a comment, not a question, but the project in, with GPs in deprived areas seems to work really well in places like Birchwood in Lincoln and Fen Side in Boston. So I think that has been a real success.
Thank you very much, certainly, I'll take those in turn. So the ultra processed foods issue is something that we looked at previously. It's a very interesting area of emerging research, actually, lots of noise, certainly lots of publicity around this issue. Essentially, it is what our services are designed to support people with when they're working on the nutrition space. And ultra processed foods, if you're interested in the scientific evidence base behind it, what we see is that ultra processed foods are often foods that are high, I was going to say naturally, there's nothing natural about them, that's the point. But they are high in sugar, salts and fat, so they are, most of them are the things that we know are unhealthy anyway. The emerging scientific consensus is that there seems to be something extra about UPFs, as they're known, for a small few percentage points that makes them additionally unhealthy in a few key ways. And there isn't actually a clear scientific understanding of what those mechanisms are and what that effect is. But if you look at some of the key correlation studies in terms of poor health and UPFs, they're finding an association with UPFs that seems to be slightly bigger than the effect of just the fact that they're high in unhealthy sugar, salts and fats anyway. But as I said, there's a lack of understanding as to what that is. Very clearly, in terms of driving obesity, rather than other particular disease areas, it is the sugar and the fat particularly, rather than the ultra processed nature, that are the main population drivers. But it all tends to cluster, so typically people who are time poor, resource poor, they're going to gravitate towards UPFs, they fill people up, they fill the kids up. You know, if they can only get one thing on the table when they come home before going out to their second job, filling the tumbs is helpful. But they have these, obviously, these consequences, these knock on effects in health. So it's not that our services aren't aimed at UPFs, it's that they're actually aimed at a healthy nutrition overall and definitely supporting people to eat more fruit and vegetables and natural foods. Quite where the scientific evidence base will go in terms of what the additional ill health causing effect of ultra processed foods is, we're watching closely. And if that scientific evidence position changes, we will make recommendations to councils and to NHS commissioners in terms of how to change our services accordingly. But for the time being, I'm very comfortable that our service delivery is aimed at healthy nutritious foods. So that was the UPF question, you're going to have to remind me what your second question was now, because I just wax lyrical. Schools, thank you very much, yes. So obviously, we have Heather Sandy here as a director of children's services, so I'll defer to her knowledge around schools. But what I would say is, from my understanding, schools essentially have autonomy. They don't, although there are standards for healthy food, they don't have to enact those standards. They can basically provide the food that kids eat, that they want. want to provide. So the food, food education team do some fantastic jobs in working with schools. Obviously, those schools have to be willing to, to accept that help, to make sure their menus, et cetera, meet the standards. In terms of what percentage of schools they're working with, I don't have that information in front of me. So I don't know if Heather wants to come in, but we can obviously find that information and give you that figure.
Thanks. Thank you, councillor. So the, the school standard, the school food standards are mandatory. So schools do have to follow them, but they're not policed. So, so basically, the, the food in schools teams works with all schools in a universal way, sending out information, giving them ideas, updating menu plans and supporting them. And then they also help them to work through how they might be able to deliver nutritious food within the budget envelope that they've got. And they recognise schools who are doing a really good job of that and then link them up to schools who might be struggling or might be struggling to find a provider who can do that, or might be thinking about setting up their own kitchen and, and developing it. And that way, it's a really small team, it's two people, and there's three hundred and sixty odd schools. But they do do a fantastic job driving that work.
Yes, councillor Nanastat.
Is there any sanction against schools which don't meet these standards? And even though they're mandatory?
So the, the standards are national standards. So the local authority wouldn't be putting any standards against them. And I think the other, the other element that's difficult is they can, so particularly in secondary schools, schools can offer a meal that meets the standards, but they can also have a snack bar. And we know that lots of children will gravitate towards the snack bar instead of the hot meal. And so I think that there are lots of challenges to it. But as far as, I, I'm not aware of any sanctions against schools. And I'm sure that the sanctions would be that they'd get a warning. And I'm not sure how, how powerful those sanctions are, but I can look into that.
Thank you. Derek Ward.
Just to add to the, the point about school meals. Obviously, children can also bring in packed lunches. And some academic work I did when I was at the University of Derby, we, we actually analysed packed lunches. And less than one per cent of packed lunches met anywhere, went anywhere near what the school meals standard. So even if every school in the country hit all of those standards, obviously, there's, there's choice for, for children to bring in their own packed lunch. And certainly on, on that analysis, and we literally took photographs of every school meal in, every packed lunch, rather, before and then after some interventions, before it was less than one per cent met the, the standard. So the, it's a complex environment. And I think coming back to Andy's answer about ultra-processed foods, what we can do at a local level is try to advise and support people so that they understand the situation. As Andy's already really well alluded to, with time pressures, with budget pressures, with, with the need to, to fill children and young people up, sometimes decisions aren't, aren't great. But we can, we can educate and support people so that they can make more informed decisions in terms of ultra, the formulation of ultra-processed foods, that's a national policy agenda, and obviously one that's pretty live at the moment as well.
Thank you. So Alison, are we on to the last two, if I've done my maths correct?
Yes, that's correct. So next will be Anne-Marie Scott, Assistant Director in Public Health, who's going to give the Homes for Independence update.
Thank you, Alison. So, okay. So this priority area is overseen by the Housing, Health and Age in Well Delivery Group, which, which leads the delivery plan in this area, supported by a range of focused subgroups with membership drawn from a range of partners. This really recognises that housing functions predominantly sit with district councils, but that the home has a significant impact on your health and wellbeing and your ability to remain independent in your home for as long as possible. In the last year, membership of this group has been expanded to include more widely health partners, including LPFT and a representative from primary care. So the aim of that is to further improve integration across health, housing and social care. Some of the areas that have been achieved, I'll just briefly cover those off. So the Good Home Hub was launched in 2024, and this provides residents with a range of self-help tools, advice and guidance through the Connect to Support Lincolnshire website to enable them to find solutions themselves to their housing issues and signpost them to areas where they might find support. There's a pilot initiative currently running, a casework support service that's aimed at supporting those that are the most vulnerable that have struggled to find that information without some level of further support to do so and to take action to improve their home environment. The Lincolnshire Homelessness and Rough Sleeper Strategy continues to work to address issues of housing supply and reduce levels of rough sleeping, recognising that there are particularly nuances around this, entrenched rough sleeping, and some areas of the county have very different levels of rough sleeping to others. District councils have taken a number of steps to focus their, their actions more recently. We've also seen a hoarding support pilot. This is testing out new approaches to supporting this group who have complex housing-related needs and as such are often, often hidden. In terms of evidence base, the group has commissioned the British Research Establishment to conduct a housing stock modelling exercise. So that is to maintain a picture of housing conditions. That is a responsibility that the district councils must fulfil. And aligned to that, we've also included a health impact assessment, so we can quantify the effects of poor housing on health outcomes. The idea of this, it helps guide any future investment and where we could most, areas that most benefit from targeted interventions. We've also, we've also been involved in the Government Funded Healthy Homes Campaign, following the tragic death of Ahab Ashak. This is targeted in two district areas that were selected by government and aims to raise awareness about damp and mould in rented homes, educating tenants and landlords about their responsibilities and rights, and looking for innovative approaches and solutions to dealing with damp and mould. Finally, so we've achieved a common discretionary housing policy for all district councils now, which sets out how disabled facilities grant funding can be used as flexibly as possible. For example, that could support with relocation where a house is not readily adaptable, and help to support top-up with mandatory DFGs. This is quite a, a step forward for the county to have achieved this type of uniform approach. And finally, another government funded initiative, the Local Energy Advice Demonstrator Programme ceased earlier this year, but that engaged over four thousand five hundred residents with energy efficiency upgrades delivered to around five hundred homes. I'll stop there. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Anne-Marie. Are there any questions for Anne-Marie? Martin Samuels.
I'm going to ask the question I've been asking of everyone else, which, which is, again, clearly lots, lots of really good things happening. What, what does success look like? And I was reading through this and thinking, would it be something along the lines, you, you talked about the BRE doing the, the assessment of the, the housing, the quality of housing. And then presumably there are measures in terms of the proportion of people who are living in housing that meets their needs or something like that. And are there relatively straightforward ways of measuring, is the, is the quality of Lincolnshire's housing stock improving or not? And is, is the proportion of Lincolnshire's population who are living in appropriate housing improving or not? And, and would, would those be appropriate measures? So I'd say to, to make a sense of, is all of this fantastic stuff that we're doing adding up to making a difference for the population as a whole, as opposed to just the people with individual schemes?
Yeah, certainly. So the Stock Condition Survey is something that's repeated every five years. So it is possible to track a change. And within that, they'd be looking at the quality of the home, the hazards in the home, the adaptations in a home. So there are a range of things there where we can start to see, has the energy performance of homes improved? Do they have fewer hazards? So there's a range of measures there. In terms of homelessness, whilst there will always be a level of rough sleeping, it's not possible to eradicate that completely. It's certainly possible to link some of the interventions and how those have had an impact on rough sleeping in areas. So there are measures that can be taken and they are, they are tracked across, so that can be provided.
Are there any other questions? Oh, councillor Nanastat.
Just on the page forty-five, Extra Care Housing, it mentions Diamond Place at Welton, which owned, certainly begun to be occupied in the spring. Is it now fully occupied?
It's not fully occupied as yet. There are still some spaces in there. But our teams are working both with district councils in that area and across our OT service to support people who may be appropriate to go into that kind of supported environment.
Thank you, Anne-Marie. I think that leads us on to our last presenter of this.
Yes. Yeah, we're, and lastly, it's over to Richard Echols from the Integrated Care Board, who's going to present the update on mental health and dementia.
Thank you, Alison. Thank you, Chair. I'll take the paper as read. Three slides, one for each of the, the main key areas of work. Just for context, the work is overseen by the Mental Health, Dementia, Learning Disability and Autism Alliance, which is attended by a wide range of stakeholders and partners and supported by a number of subgroups. I won't go through every single bullet point on the slide, but I will pick out some of the key points. Children and young people, we know that there is a growing need for support for children and young people. One in five CYP having a probable mental health disorder, and that comes from two thousand and twenty-three national data. We have a strong prevention focus in Lincolnshire and a very good early intervention offer. We are, we're committed to rolling out mental health support teams. Lincolnshire's rollout of mental health support teams in schools has been one of the best in the country. I think we're matched with Derbyshire for the, the, the rollout measures that we've, we've achieved through that. We've seen great innovation through the Lumenover Pilot, Twilight Cafe Pilot in Lincoln. Looking again at improving the access to that prevention offer that we have. Future plans for twenty-five, twenty-six, greater understanding of the inequalities in mental health access for CYP. Certainly reviewing the productivity of mental health services and working with the VCS, VCFSE sector and other partners to increase local community support. Continued rollout for mental health support teams in schools with further waves coming online. And then as that rolls out further, what we really need to and want to do is look at the integration of our existing service, the Healthy Mind Service, and how that complements and links in with MHSTs going forward in the future, because there is a danger that there's potential duplication going forward. We'll roll on to working age adult mental health. Prevention of mental health still remains a high priority for Lincolnshire through the Prevention Concordat. We're looking and have done some work around maximising support in the community to ensure prevention support. One of the key areas we need to look at doing is reviewing that crisis pathway, and that's ongoing at the moment via LPFT. Another key area that we have started to do and are looking at is that intensive assertive outreach officer, offer, individuals with personality disorder and serious mental illness. And of course, that's in response and in light of the Valdo Calacane review and recommendations from the Nottinghamshire tragedy. Further work around addressing health inequalities through better relationship with VCFSE sector. I would also add with primary care as well. We know adults with severe mental illness have a ten to twenty-year lower life expectancy than the rest of the population. That's both in Lincolnshire and nationally. We've done a lot of work to improve our annual health check offer for that population. Our performance has improved along the lines of the national target, but we want to go further. Because in achieving the national target of sixty-six per cent, that's still thirty-four per cent of individuals not receiving a health check. We need to focus around the, the flow of individuals along the mental health pathways, in particular along the acute pathway, where we see particular issues with delayed transfers of care and bottlenecks within bed base for individuals who are clinically ready for discharge. There's a new step-down service to support that move for individuals being developed at Ashley House, which is in Grantham, where we'll start to see a, a re-ablement type model being developed, supported by the, the independent sector and Turning Point, providing the support whilst it's wrapped around by LPFT clinicians. Suicide prevention work continues to be a major focus on raising awareness and reducing stigma to help communities know how to support people in crisis. Moving on to dementia. As most of us probably know, dementia continues to increase year on year. Lincolnshire has an older population, that older population profile is shifting. It's an issue that isn't going to go away, which means dementia really needs to be a focus. Our dementia diagnosis rate for Lincolnshire is, I'm going to say the word good in the fact that we are overachieving above the national target. But what that means is we're identifying more people with dementia in Lincolnshire than the rest of the country. A new dementia strategy has been developed in twenty-twenty-five, and I think in the paper you've got a, a number of, of key areas where we're looking to achieve and what we're looking to do in the dementia section. Dementia Home Treatment Team Pilot, which has been going for some time, has been completed. That's had some excellent feedback. That's provided a community-based service and what we've seen whilst we had the temporary closure of Manthorpe. As that service came on stream, one of the worries that we would see, older adult dementia out of area placements be required. We haven't seen that. That home treatment team's very much done what the, the, the intention was. So it's look at how we can continue with that. A new dementia care pilot in Lincoln, CDC, will start in October, looking at that every contact counts type model, where there's, there's essentially a streamlined same-day approach to memory, memory assessment services. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Richard. Do we have any questions for Richard Echols? Councillor Nanastat.
Just on page fifty-seven, you mentioned COOTH, which is very highly regarded as a service. But the implication is that it is not as well-used in some areas than others. So what is doing, being done to promote the service?
That's a very good question. I'm going to default to Heather. Just on the context, we have a section seventy-five agreement in Lincolnshire with a poor budget. So the ICB devolves its responsibilities around CYP commissioning around mental health to Lincolnshire County Council.
Thanks, councillor, and thanks, Richard. So we do lots of work to promote COOTH. We work through our schools. So for those of you who don't know, COOTH is an online counselling service where children can get access to support on a range of subjects and can get one-to-one support and can make appointments to meet with people as well. So we promote that through our schools. So we make sure our schools are aware of that. We promote that through our website and through a range of other sources. It is true, though, that since we initially commissioned COOTH, there is a lot more availability out there, and a lot of that is also free. So there's a lot of stuff that's been doing nationally around supporting children and young people with mental health. So we, one of the, we wouldn't mind if children were finding that support and accessing that through another online site, then that would, that would be for them to decide. that through another online site, then that would be for them to decide, particularly as they get a bit older and look for lines of support that they find most useful. The difference with COOTH and the reason we promote COOTH is that it is, we know how regulated it is, we know the training of the councillors behind that, and we know the safeguards that are put in place within that online counselling.
Thank you, and it is very highly regarded as a service.
It's high, yeah, it is highly regarded, yeah.
Thank you, Richard, thank you, Heather. Councillor Lee, you had a question?
I think Heather actually answered my question, thank you. But just to say as well, in terms of dementia service, very much appreciated. My mum had dementia and it's really good to see some of the improvements, thank you.
Were there any other questions? Councillor Hume.
First of all, a little bit of a statement and then a question. I was so, so pleased to see a focus on brain health as opposed to mental health. I think words matter and it's incredibly important for people to understand and really comprehend how important looking after your actual physical brain is and how it is part of that. And the question is related to that. Has a lot of thought gone into perhaps pushing resources into more prevention and more perhaps education, perhaps even at school level, just in terms of educating people about how it happens? And of course, there's going to be circumstances where we can't, we can't make those sorts of predictions, but there are a lot of things we can do right now, and I think a lot of people simply remain ignorant about the causes.
Thank you, that's a really timely question. Last week, the ICB, clinicians from across each of the, the health organisations in Lincolnshire, LCC were present as well, met to look at the twenty-six, twenty-seven development of the clinical strategy for Lincolnshire. A key focus, I'm really pleased to say, because we had excellent presentations from public health, Andy included, although he's left, so I can't hear the compliment. A key focus on those discussions was how we move upstream, how do we focus around prevention? Because actually, what we know, given the constraints that we're all working within across health and social care and education, we need to do things differently. There is a challenge around how we shift resource that's currently at the top end and move it, you know, further along to the prevention agenda, but there was a clear commitment on Friday. There's a further workshop in October, looking at how we shift that into next year's planning round, but it's a really good question, and it's a really important challenge that we need to solve in doing that, because that's how we'll have the biggest impact.
Thank you, Richard. I'd like to thank all, well, Alison and all five presenters for what's been a very informative series of presentations, and indeed for members for their contributions throughout. And just to pick up on a request for copies of the slides to be circulated to members, please. So we're just over an hour into that one item, so well done to everybody. And we're now invited to firstly note the information provided in the Joint Health and Wellbeing Strategy Annual Assurance Reports for twenty-twenty-four and twenty-five, and secondly, to approve the Joint Health and Wellbeing Strategy Priority Delivery Plans for twenty-twenty-five to twenty-six, prior to the publication on the Lincolnshire Health Intelligence Hub. Do I have a proposal for that? Martin Sammers and a seconded, please. Councillor Humes. For all those in favour, if you could raise your hands, please. Any against? Any abstentions? Thank you, that's agreed. So we now move to item seven A, Fit for the Future, the Ten Year Health Plan for England. This item can be found on pages eighty-seven to one oh-two of the Agenda Pack, and I'd like again to ask Alison Christie, Head of Prevention and System Oversight, to introduce the report. Alison.
Thank you, Chair. As I'm sure you're all aware, in July, the government published its ten-year health plan, setting out a new vision for a model of health, for health, to make it fit for future, based around three transformational shifts, from hospital to community, analogue to digital, and sickness to prevention. Feedback from the National Listening Exercise informed the development of the plan, which concluded that the current NHS model is unsustainable, with disproportionate share of staff and resources focused on hospitals and with fragmented services across wider health and care system that lacks coordination and integration. Central to the government's plan is the introduction of new neighbourhood health service to help reduce pressure on hospitals and refocus health and care delivery within communities. All parts of the health and care system are expected to work closely together to develop a new local approach, building on existing examples of partnership working, for example, multidisciplinary teams and PCNs. During the summer, ICBS were invited to participate in the first wave of the National Neighbourhood Health Improvement Programme, which aims to have at least one place identified as developing neighbourhood health in each ICB. The first wave of pilot areas will accelerate the thinking and development, as well as sharing the learning as part of a further rollout. Since writing the report, the government have announced forty-two areas will take part in the first wave, but unfortunately, Lincolnshire was not chosen as part of that. Appendix A provides a summary of the key proposals contained in the ten-year plan, and Appendix B provides an assessment of Lincolnshire's readiness, highlighting just some of the joint work that's already taking place across the county to achieve the three transformational shifts. One thing I do want to bring to the board's attention is a new requirement to develop a neighbourhood plan. This will need to be drawn up by local government, local NHS organisations, wider partners, under the leadership of the Health and Wellbeing Board, incorporating Public Health, Social Care and the Better Care Fund. The plan needs to be, needs to set out how the NHS, local authority and other organisations, including social care providers and the VCS, will work together to design and deliver neighbourhood health services. NHS Planning Guidance, published on the eighth of September, suggests that these plans may need to be developed by December, but we're waiting more further detailed guidance to be published, which is expected shortly. While officers within public health and the ICB have had some initial discussions, we recognise the importance of needing to involve wider partners in this development. To ensure we remain flexible and be ready to respond quickly once new guidance is published, I'd like to propose that we establish a small working group under the guidance of the Health and Wellbeing Board to take this work forward and report back at future meetings. And I don't know whether Claire or Derek wants to add anything further.
Yeah, I'm happy to come in, thanks, Alison. I think it's probably important to say that, you know, the ten-year plan, it's a good read, actually, if you've not already had a look at it, but some of the key main aims, we've talked about quite a number of them today, so it's increasing healthy life expectancy and halving the inequality gap and raising the healthiest generation of children. So, and I think if you listen to what we've heard today, accepting, I agree with some of the comments about the outcomes and being clear about those, there's a lot of work that's been happening in Lincolnshire, so our baseline and our foundations are in a pretty good place, but we've got to step up the population lens level on that, I think, as we go through this, this next stage. So, you know, for example, a strategic approach to how we're going to deliver digital transformation. So there's lots in there, isn't there, about what we're going to do, but it's actually at the surface level in pockets, it's not an actual, a kind of strategic approach of what we're going to do in Lincolnshire. So, and in particular on the neighbourhood health, so we have been doing quite a lot of work on that already in Lincolnshire in terms of neighbourhood working, but again, it's very clear now that we will be asked as a Health and Wellbeing Board to kind of set that strategic direction, and then probably will require some sort of operational delivery group of providers underneath at some point, but obviously we're awaiting further guidance. So I support the notion that we're going to need to actually have some sort of working group that can report back into here.
Thank you, Claire. Do I have any questions or comments? Sorry, Karen Dunderdale, sorry, thank you.
Thank you, Chair, and can I start by offering my apologies, been a few minutes late into the chamber for the meeting. Really good to read the report, and I think it's, it probably echoes what us providers across the NHS were also undertaking as well across our boards. We certainly welcome the ten-year plan, and as Claire Raybold's already commented on, there's lots of work that's happening across the NHS and health in line with the ten-year plan, and I certainly recognise a number of the things that are sat within that report, so really good to see them all together. I think it endorses, from my perspective, what we're trying to do as a group, bringing acute and community services together. It's about shifting those services away from an acute setting into a community setting, and that's absolutely the way forward, both clinically and strategically in our direction. Great to see the Lincolnshire position, and I think Alison you did mention, whilst this list isn't exhaustive, there are lots of things that we can all see that we're doing. So as well as Claire would echo the point about, would really welcome a group that would support the Health and Wellbeing Board, and would certainly want to see some of my colleagues supporting that group as well, so that we can come together collectively in our endeavour to deliver the ten-year health plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Councillor Woolley.
Thank you, Chairman. The, as Karen's just said, there are a number of things to be welcomed here, but I'm going to get really, really parochial, because on the whole, this latest plan, which isn't much different to what was going on, and certainly not much different to what was going on in Lincolnshire already, is almost taking us in, pulling us one way, and yet we're being encouraged to go another way. And what I am concerned about is that, on the one hand, combined authorities, i.e. the Lincolnshire Combined Authority with our mayor, is going that way, and yet Lincolnshire, from a health point of view, is going into, join up with Derbyshire, Nottinghamshire. I don't have an issue with it, other than, hang on a minute, that's a bit of a mixed message, you know, one of the bullet points that Alison has kindly put down is that there's an ambition for ICBS to be coterminance, coterminous with the relevant combined authority boundary. Well, we've made a dog's breakfast of that, well, I say we have, we've been guided to make a dog's breakfast, because ordinarily, we would be joining with our north and north-east neighbours. So what I really want us to be very, very sure of is, I have no problem in going along with these plans whatsoever, as long as it's in the best interests for the people of Lincolnshire every time, and that should be the thought that we have. Does this work for Lincolnshire residents? Because in the past, we've made sure that we put our residents first, and as an example, it didn't take us long between Lincolnshire's ICB and ourselves to go, well, these ICPs are a waste of time and we park them up, because we could see that the way that we were working and the way that, surprise, surprise, we're now being asked to work, was actually working in the first place, you know, quite some time ago. So I do want us to be very, very sure that as we progress through this, that it's Lincolnshire first and foremost each time, but I would ask you to consider writing to someone above my pay grade, your pay grade, et cetera, to just query this business about, well, which ways the mayor meant to go, and how can the mayor for Lincolnshire be supportive if they're being expected to sit, she's being expected to sit on at least two ICB boards? I mean, there's plenty of other work going on without that commitment as well, so thank you.
Councillor Woolley, I, you've taken the words out of my mouth, certainly in the past. I understand the mayor has written to the DHSC about this, but I wondered if I may get some input from Claire Raybold and your capacity to answer councillor Woolley's concerns?
Yeah, I'm not sure I'll be able to answer the concerns, Sue, but, but yeah, just, just to say, you're absolutely right. So the mayor did write to the Secretary of State for Health, actually. I don't know if the mayor received a response to that, but obviously, nothing has changed in terms of the decisions that have been made. So I think it is what it is at this point in time. There are examples, though, across the country where mayors do cross over borders, so, and it, and it's been enabled to work, but it's not ideal. I suspect that, you know, in the future, things may, may change as local government reform moves forward as well. I guess we're just at a point in time at the moment. What I would say is Lincolnshire ICB, whilst we're clustering with the two other ICBS in Derbyshire and Nottinghamshire, we are still a statutory organisation within that, so we're working as a cluster, but we retain the responsibility for Lincolnshire within that. So hopefully that will reassure you that the voice of the Lincolnshire residents won't get lost as that comes together. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. Gerry McSorley, you raised your hand there, would you like to add to that?
Thank you, Chair, and just to pick up councillor Woolley's observations, just to make it just clear again for the minutes, we made representations to NHS England for a Greater Lincolnshire ICB. We entered into discussions with our colleagues in the north of the county and via our region in the Midlands, with our corresponding region in Yorkshire and the North East. The response we got back, to be blunt, was picking up councillor Woolley's observation of parochialism, is this was an example of where the NHS would itself become parochial and deal with its own issue. I have no personal doubt that the issue of a Greater Lincolnshire component will have to return to the agenda on the back of local government reform. So I don't, I think this is a, an unfortunate stop-gap solution that solves a perceived problem within the NHS, but I think it is well recognised that despite the way we are now working across the cluster with our colleagues in Derbyshire and Nottinghamshire, which is productive and is, and is, and is good, the issue of Greater Lincolnshire will have to return to the agenda, and I think it is simply a matter of time.
Thank you, Gerry, I saw watch this space, in other words. Derek Ward.
Thank you. I wouldn't talk about the incongruence of national policy, because we'd be here for a while, wouldn't we? To provide the Lincolnshire Health and Wellbeing Board with some assurance, the focus of the officer group will be very much on, obviously, Lincolnshire. That doesn't mean in splendid isolation, because we recognise that patient flows, ambulance services, specialist services do go greater than Lincolnshire, but we will be focusing, and that's why Alison suggested, we work collectively, including with Darren and colleagues from, from the group, and all of our providers, including community, mental health, primary care networks, everybody, but a relatively small, discreet group at a reasonably senior level to start to pull something together, given our expectations of the timescales. And of course, really important to note that both within the ten-year health plan, but also in the planning guidance, there is an expectation that a chunk of council services will also align to the neighbourhood health programme, so we need to work that through and start to bring forward some ideas for the Health and Wellbeing Board to consider if indeed we need to approve something as a board in December. So it's really a very practical solution to get cracking on this, building, as we've already said, Karen's mentioned, Claire's mentioned, on a lot of work that we've already done around digital, around community primary partnerships, neighbourhood health approaches, and of course, as Director of Public Health, around prevention.
Thank you, Derek. Councillor Lee, I hadn't forgotten you.
Well, I think I'm probably a bit of a lone voice here, apart from Karen Dunderdale. I'm really excited about this. I qualified in two thousand and three as a nurse, and I saw the NHS go down and down and down over those years, and the staff were crying out just as loudly as the patients were for change, and the only way that that can change is if some, if some of the care is moved from hospital to the community, and this is really exciting. And I'm sorry, but I find it, I don't like to use the word, I find it really petty to sit and listen to people being parochial about it. This is about transformational shift within the NHS, and it's just so important, and it's much more important than where borders are. I mean, that's above my pay grade, but this is about something much more, something much more key to the NHS and what it delivers and how it should deliver it. But as, as a, as a final thing I'd like to say as well, I've always been really opposed to private care within the NHS, just ideologically, but I am always prepared to revisit that, and I'm waiting for a knee operation, and I tell you what, by- I'm waiting for a knee operation and I tell you what, by going to the private hospital, I've got seen an awful lot quicker than if I dug my heels in and said I'm only going to an NHS hospital because the waiting lists were horrendous for the county. They really were and I'm getting it done so much quicker. So actually, I support this and I'm not going to be parochial about it, I think it's great. And as somebody who's a healthcare professional for 25 years, I'm absolutely behind it.
Thank you Councillor Lee, your enthusiasm, your optimism is duly noted, your passion is noted. Melanie Weatherall.
Thank you Chair and I just, I am excited for different reasons and I'm very grateful to our colleagues here that the planning guidance on neighbourhood health includes care providers and in lots of ICB areas, that was a complete and utter shock and they're running around trying to work out who those care providers are and how they might connect with them. So I'm really grateful that actually in Lincolnshire, we know how to work together and although we are the private sector, Councillor Lee, I don't think we are big corporates. In Lincolnshire, I think we are mostly small providers and very keen to do whatever we can to make this work for our staff and our citizens.
Thank you Melanie. It's been a pleasure in the short time that I've had the opportunity to work with you and I again note your enthusiasm and your sincerity. Do I have any other questions? In which case, just picking up on Alison's point and indeed what Claire was saying, if we go to the actions on page 87, we've been asked, the first two I think would stay as they are and I'll read them out, to note, first one, to note the key proposals on the 10-year health plan as summarised in Appendix A. Two, to note Lincolnshire's integrated care system has submitted an application to the National Neighbourhood Health Implementation Programme, identifying Lincolnshire as a whole, as the neighbourhood. And then to change the current item three and add two additional, replace it with two additional ones, if I start with three, to note the readiness assessment in Appendix B, which outlines a range of activity already underway in the Lincolnshire aligned to the three strategic shifts of the 10-year plan. And then an additional point four, to meet the expectation in the 10-year plan for developing a neighbourhood plan under the leadership of the Health and Wellbeing Board, agree to establish a working group to lead this work and report back at future meetings. I'm happy to propose that. Could I have a second please? Karen Dunderdale? So if I could then ask for, if you're in favour to raise your hands please. Thank you. Those against? Are there any abstentions? Thank you, that's agreed, thank you. I'd like to now move on to item 7B, which is the Lincolnshire Better Care Fund update. This can be found on pages 103 to 112 of the Agenda Pack and members are invited to note the update. I would like to welcome Martin Samuels, Executive Director for Adult Care and Community Wellbeing and Paul Summers, Programme Manager, Better Care Fund, to present this report. Thank you.
Thank you. Your note that Paul has not been able to join us so it will...
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for that Martin.
This is one of those many instances where Paul has done all the work and I will present it. So members of the board will be well familiar with the Better Care Fund. I think we're now 10 years into the Better Care Fund. You'll be therefore also well familiar that the national timings for when reports and updates are meant to be submitted into NHS England never match with the meetings of this board and therefore, once again, the quarter one return that we are required to provide, the deadline for it to be submitted has already passed and therefore, as always happens, in consultation with the Chair, we've submitted that submission but it brought back to the board to note. The question always gets asked, well, why don't we rearrange the meetings of the Health and Wellbeing Board so they fit? We get fairly short notice from NHS England as to when these submissions are meant to be submitted and therefore the risk is that we would end up constantly rearranging the dates of the Health and Wellbeing Board at fairly short notice, which would cause difficulties with other reports. So that's the position in terms of the quarter one report. Members of the board will be aware that earlier in the calendar year, we did a review of the Better Care Fund. We found that something like 99% of the funding in the Better Care Fund is spent on core care packages and associated, directly associated staffs. There is sometimes an impression that the Better Care Fund is a pot of money for pilots and initiatives and testing things out to see whether they're good ideas or not. In practice, the fund in Lincolnshire is used for another of the key purposes, which is the protection of core services and that is where that money is spent. Nonetheless, it does have significant impact, positive impact on Lincolnshire people. These are core services, therefore they make a big difference. The report particularly highlights the DFG, the Disabled Facilities Grant, which is received by the County Council but automatically by a national formula then passported through to districts for their housing responsibilities. The report gives statistics for the number of people who are supported and the number of schemes that are enabled in that way. A significant part of the Better Care Fund also supports a range of intermediate care services, reabeyment and active recovery beds and the like, which make a key difference in that staging between the intensive care that people need in hospital and their ongoing care when they are back at home. And then also it makes reference to the Lincolnshire Community Equipment Service, which provides tens of thousands of items of equipment to Lincolnshire residents every year, which makes that difference, people being able to stay in their home or having to be in care. And members of the board will have seen and been aware that the provider of that service, NRS, that company, one of the major providers of this service nationally, providing about a quarter of the country, went into liquidation a few weeks ago and that we were successful in transferring that activity to a different provider. It has been inevitably a little bit bumpy and we've been aware that the catalogue of equipment has had to be a little bit restricted during that transition period but I think it's fair to say that the experience in Lincolnshire has been significantly better than in many other parts of the country and that is, I think, testament to the very, very high quality work done by a number of staff across the County Council but also a number of staff in the NHS system and I'm sure the board would join me in thanking all of the people involved in that because it has made a significant difference for Lincolnshire people. Last thing I'll note is that we are aware that the Department of Health and Social Care and the Ministry for Housing, Communities and Local Government, MHCLG, are doing a review of the Better Care Fund. At the moment, we don't, you know, that review is still underway, we don't know exactly what it will come out with, however, there are indications that the intention is to refocus the Better Care Fund on intermediate care. Now, that would fit in many ways with the outcome of the review that, as I say, we did earlier in the year where we said, well, mental health and learning disability budgets in their entirety are in the Better Care Fund in Lincolnshire. That doesn't really feel particularly well-aligned to the focus of the Better Care Fund, which already has been moving towards intermediate care. So I think that that movement would be, the national movement, if it turns out to be correct, would not, would probably be pushing us in a direction we were wanting to go already. We would need to see quite what the guidance meant if it was saying that the BCF should be entirely focused on intermediate care. One of the key points, as I've said, is that 99% of the Better Care Fund is spent on delivery of care. So if the Better Care Fund were to be focused on intermediate care, then the funding for those other core services would need to be found from somewhere. There's not free money floating around so we need to check on that. But we will no doubt receive guidance in the fullness of time, which will hopefully allow us give us sufficient time to prepare a new Better Care Fund plan for 2026, 27. And last thing on that is, I gather they are thinking of there being a new name for it. So it may not be the Better Care Fund at the end of this year, it may be something else but I don't know what that will be. So as the report says, the Health and Wellbeing Board is asked to note the submitted quarter one report and the update on the impact of the BCF but I'm very happy to take any questions in the meantime.
Thank you Martin. If I may just ensure that we do record thanks to all those members of staff, NHS and LCC and elsewhere in fact, that have been involved in the relatively smooth transfer of the equipment service. And yes, as you say, there have been a few bumps in the road admittedly but compared to certain other authorities, it's certainly been far less so. So as long as we can note that, our thanks to those involved. Do we have any questions for Martin Samuels? Karen Dunderdale?
Thank you, more of a comment than a question, so really helpful to see all of that and you're absolutely right, we've had some very useful and productive conversations about what is currently called the Better Care Fund. But just recognising the conversations we've had so far in this Health and Wellbeing Board about the changing architecture across health and care, I just wonder if we need to give some consideration, certainly outside of the Health and Wellbeing Board, about how we commission the delivery of the first ask in the 10-year plan? So if that's about innovation and left shift and keeping people safe at home, recognising how we spend the BCF at the moment and you described on core services and that's going to be a conundrum for us certainly across Lincolnshire, just thinking about the mechanisms and the plans to potentially move resources and how we might need to think about that. And I would certainly be keen that from health and the NHS's perspective and ultimately the group's perspective, that we could work, as we've always, as we always have done, in a way where we could have those collaborative discussions about that and continue very productive relationships in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment. Martin?
Yeah, if I could just respond to that, so very welcome, thank you. A couple of things, as you say, we've been talking about the changes in the NHS. I think it's worth underlining that, to the best of my understanding, there is no intention to change the footprint for the Joint Health Wellbeing Strategy, the neighbourhood plan and the, whatever the Better Care Fund gets called in the future, so that they will be still on Health and Wellbeing Board footprints and therefore a Lincolnshire County footprint, notwithstanding that the other changes within the NHS. And that one of the key things we will need to look at is the interaction between those three plans and strategies because I will say, I'm not entirely convinced that the different teams within DHSE that are leading on those three initiatives are necessarily talking to each other. It has on occasion been known that different bits of the department are not entirely aligned because I find myself wondering a little bit, what's the difference between the neighbourhood health plan and the joint health and wellbeing strategy and how is that separate from the Better Care Fund? No doubt the guidance that we are all waiting for with bated breath from DHSE will make it all very clear.
Thank you Martin. Councillor Woolley?
Thank you. Yes, I think Martin, you've made a very good point there because I think, doesn't the neighbourhood plan have to use the Joint Strategic Needs Assessment, if I remember rightly? And it's sort of, so it's the Health and Wellbeing Strategy anyway, isn't it? So I should know the answer to this and I don't. The NHS contribution at the moment, or sorry, the ICB contribution at the moment obviously comes from Lincolnshire ICB. Will it still be coming from Lincolnshire ICB or will it be coming from the cluster port? Is the first question.
Councillor, I'll just respond to that. So it'll come from Lincolnshire ICB because it remains a statutory organisation at the moment.
Thank you. And then, this is slightly mean but it would be quite interesting. I know that this is a first quarter report or whatever and so I was just wondering if where we've got within the template that's been sent back, we're nearly up to sort of it being, as it were, six months out of date. So there's five months of information that could go in. I accept there is a reason, you know, it's not there because this is only an interim. But is the direction of travel, particularly say those residential home numbers, is it going in the right direction? Because overall, we're looking at quite a drop for residential placements in 25, 26 if all goes well. But, you know, with the information that you've now got, is that looking likely or not?
So it is a slightly unfair question but that's okay, that's fine. So obviously what we've presented is the submission and therefore it was the quarter one submission. If Paul Summers had been able to join us, I suspect that he would have known the data. I'm afraid I cannot immediately recall the data in terms of the care home placements. We were, I was actually looking at them with my team just yesterday but in a slightly different context and therefore I'd have to come back to you. But we are seeing, so from memory, I think we are continuing to see a rise in residential care, residential home placements for working age adults but it is slightly less of a rise than we had forecast. And for older people, I think I'm right in saying that we are pretty much flat in terms of the number of new residential home placements, which is slightly below the forecast again. So I think in both age cohorts, we are slightly below what the forecast had been.
Councillor Woolley, would you actually like the numbers?
It's absolutely fair. I think it was spotted fairly quickly that it was a pretty, well, not unfair question but it was just one of interest. It sort of sparked more questions than probably the answers that were there. But I know I'm quite happy that we wait a little longer until the next quarter's information is due. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further comments or questions? In which case, we're invited to note the update provided on the 25, 26 Better Care Fund submission as outlined in the report. So if, all those in favour would raise their hands? Do I have any against? And any abstentions? Okay, that's noted, thank you. Moving to the item 7C, which is the Health Protection Board Annual Report 2024 to 25. This can be found on pages 113 to 164 of the Agenda Pack and I'd like to invite Derek Ward to present this item. Derek?
Thank you. As with others, I'll take the report as read and I'll just pull out a few of the salient points, I think. By way of background, the board will remember that we've had a Health Protection Board that I've chaired since I've been in Lincolnshire but we didn't really have anywhere that we reported into even though as a system, we have statutory responsibilities around health protection and certainly as a county council, we have responsibilities. So the board agreed to receive the report and that's why we're here today really, just to give that report. The actions required really are to receive it, to note and support the focus and priorities for 25, 26. This was originally, would have come at an earlier Health and Wellbeing Board but with some of the changes, we've been delayed slightly so we are on with this anyway. And to note and support the Lincolnshire immunisation strategy. Just to pull out key points, health protection assurance, as I said, we've been doing this in Lincolnshire for a long time now, in an integrated way between the councils, and I include the district councils in that, and the NHS. But in 2019, the Association of Directors of Public Health and Public Health England, as was then... as was then, produced a series of what good looks like and particularly pulled together what good looks like from a Health Protection Assurance Framework. We were actually, in Lincolnshire, the area that drafted the majority of that report in the first place. We'd done some work across the East Midlands around what good health protection models look like that was used by the East Midlands Association, and then that was picked up nationally. So we were ahead of the game, but that was because we were ahead of the game, if you like. We've included in Appendix A the Self-Assessment Framework against that, so the board have assurance and can actually see where Lincolnshire scores against that self-assessment. And you'll see that the main risk noted at present is in relation to the commissioning responsibility around immunisation and screening. This is a national issue. It's not a Lincolnshire issue. It was due to be delegated to ICBs, but obviously lots of changes at the moment. And it's less than clear about how and who and why different parts of the system will do different roles within immunisation and screening. To give the board assurance, whilst that's happening, the Health Protection Board keeps holding the ring, keeps looking at the data around vaccination, immunisation uptake, around screening uptake, and has that collective scrutiny of those figures and will keep reporting through to the Health and Wellbeing Board whilst everything happens around it. In terms of health protection activities specifically, you'll see that we do, and we're quite unusual in this, work really closely with our care homes, with Melanie and her teams and with the wider care homes across Lincolnshire, to help care homes manage outbreaks of infectious disease and to be proactive around infection prevention and control, IPC as we call it there. And you'll see some of the figures there, just coming back to Martin's recurring questions today about can we demonstrate what good we're doing? We've got a lot of data in here and also in the appendices behind around all of the work we're doing with partly a specific focus on care homes in terms of infection prevention and control. But then at the other end of the age scale, if you look at vaccination immunisation, particularly around school-aged immunisation, a lot of work there, again, as a system with children, young people, as a director and with our schools, around making sure that we maintain and aim to increase the rates of uptake for immunisations across a routine childhood schedule. Nationally and internationally, unfortunately, we see those figures going down. So we are absolutely working very closely on that to try to make sure that we maintain and ideally push that forwards. And you'll see under 4.2 on page 116, we have through the leadership of the ICB Medical Director, pulled together a system-wide immunisation board, which we all collectively feed into, try to maintain those vaccination levels. To repeat, vaccination is the safest and best way to protect children, young people, and indeed adults and older people as we come into flu season. So lots of facts and figures in there to give the board some assurance, including some very specific projects which I won't go into. Final thing I'll just raise, and it's particularly timely as we have a national exercise at the moment going on, is around the work that we've done around Emergency Preparedness, Resilience and Response, EPRR, very much about preparing for the next big issue that may impact upon people's health and wellbeing. The obvious area there is a pandemic, but it's not just a pandemic. We've seen cyber attacks and obviously the impact that can have on health and care systems, other malicious attacks. So we prepare for all of that. Sometimes that comes through the Health Protection Board. Sometimes it comes through a different board, but we make sure we bring it all together and report back. Final thing I'll say before wrapping up is that if you have a look on page 120, you'll see that the headlines of the forward look for 25, 26, and again, this would have come to the board three months ago, so we're already well into the work over this. But the work that we're on at the moment as a health protection system is supporting that preparedness for response recovery from health protection incidents, continuing to work on infectious disease and outbreaks. Really important to recognise that things like tuberculosis is still a big issue in Lincolnshire, still a big issue in our homeless populations. And this is where some of these issues overlap. It's not just about health protection, it's about the role of district councils in housing. It's around the work we do as a system. So I just wanted to flag that up. And there's a whole range of different programmes there that members can have a look at and hopefully will have already had a look through. So I'll stop there. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Derek. Do we have any questions or comments? Councillor Willie?
Just a very quick comment slash question. It's around the, and it's not just to prove that I've read the papers all the way to the back, but I applaud you for the business of inspecting the funeral homes. I know this was just a sample size and it was perhaps for a more of a specific reason. And obviously, having worked on the bigger issue at a national level, it was literally opening a can of worms, there's no doubt about it. But if you have any spare capacity at all, can that be rolled out in other parts of the county, if only to make sure that we're covering as much as we can? Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Spare capacity, it's like loose change, isn't it? We certainly recognise the national priorities around this area and with some of the other changes that we expect to come through from central government, there will be responsibilities. So as that comes through, we'll have to then prioritise the sort of work, I think you're talking about councillor Willie in that sense, and come back probably to the Health Protection Board with a reprioritisation to make sure collectively we're focusing on the things that we need to focus on.
Councillor Anasla?
Just a point, page 161, which refers to uptake of vaccination rates for frontline health workers. And obviously those, particularly in care homes, those are really low. Is there anywhere we could learn from which is doing a better, has a better outcome?
The short answer is not really. What we've seen across the country, and I'll open up to Claire and to Karen and others, is a significant drop in frontline staff, whether NHS or social care or other uptake of vaccines. To my knowledge and having looked at the data across the country, I don't think there's anywhere that particularly performs well and everybody's dropped down. I think it's been collectively called vaccine fatigue in terms of people just not wanting to take up their vaccines. What we continue to do is what everybody continues to do, just make that point that vaccines are the safest, most efficacious way, not only to protect yourself and your loved ones, because of course if you haven't had your vaccines in your day job, you are coming across people who may have infectious diseases. You're risking taking those diseases back home. But it also is a way for you to protect the people that you care for as part of the job. You may remember during Covid, there was a conversation about whether it would be mandated for frontline staff and for some of us who are professionally registered in certain roles, like my role, then we are expected to be able to demonstrate that we have an up-to-date vaccine schedule. But that's not true across all professional groups. And I guess that would be a conversation to be had with those groups.
Thank you, Derek. councillor Lee?
Thanks, Chair. Thanks for indulging me. It's only a quick one. I didn't realise that vaccination in the workplace had actually stopped at the hospital. That's dreadful, because I tell you what, trying to find the time to do it, if that's the case. People used to come on the wards and it was like, you know, if you're, might as well do it, you know, get it over with. And if that's stopped, I don't think that's a very good thing.
Karen Dunderdown?
Yeah, thank you. I'll respond to that, councillor Lee. And then just wanted to pick up a point that Derek made. Just to be clear, in the workplace, vaccinations for healthcare workers are available. I think the point that Derek was making was the uptake of that service and that facility has reduced significantly since Covid. And you're absolutely right, there's probably lots of reasons for that. But the one that we talk most about is vaccination fatigue. Having said that, all chief executives and chairs of the NHS, across the NHS, received a letter from the Chief Executive of NHS England last week, Sir Jim Mackey, which we always receive from the Chief Exec of the NHS on a mid-year point each year, restating the requirements of us to deliver our performance workforce, financial position and quality of services. One of the things in that letter is a very clear steer about how we continue to protect the health and wellbeing of our frontline workers and healthcare workers and an expectation that we need to increase the vaccination rates of that workforce. So both Claire, Sarah Connery and myself are just working through what we can do to potentially incentivise our colleagues to have their vaccinations. Lollipops have always gone down very well, but I think it'll take more than lollipops this year. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that, but I believe councillor Lee would like to come back.
Chair, just to come back, you used to get a little badge with flu fighter on it. Thank you for clarifying that. I was horrified at the thought because that's the only time I ever had a vaccination, to be fair. Suggestion, give them a cup of tea break afterwards. I think they'd have it then.
A nice cup of tea, yes. Derek?
Just to come back on the point about frontline staff, it was just, again, providing reassurance that Lincolnshire County Council also provides vaccinations for frontline staff, which isn't the case everywhere as well. So the offer is there. It is about the uptake and trying to maintain and increase the uptake.
Thank you, Derek. Melanie Wetherely?
Thank you, Chair. I note that the care home staff uptake is low and home care is probably even worse. I don't think it's quite as bad as it looks, though unfortunately it's not connect, when you have your vaccination, in the NHS they collect the, or in the NHS, in social care, although they ask you, nobody collects it. So we only know what care providers report on the capacity tracker and that is dependent on the staff telling you. And we've had an upsurge recently in people saying, whether or not I've had my vaccination is nothing to do with you, I'm not telling you. So that's one of the things we have to get over. But also, if the vaccination programme works and the person who vaccinates the residents can vaccinate the staff at the same time, we have the benefits that we have in the NHS. But the last couple of years, the vaccines have not arrived at the same time, so that didn't work. And for our home care staff, it is really going to have to be a push because they have to go out of their way in unpaid time to get their vaccination. We're trying to tell them that it's a benefit because they're saving £17.50 because they don't have to pay for the vaccine. But I'm not sure that's working.
Thank you for that comment. Do I have any other questions or comments? That was very interesting indeed. Thank you, Derek, for your presentation. We're invited to note the Director of Public Health Annual Health Projection Report, sorry, Protection Report, note and support the focus and priorities for 2025, 26 and to note and support the Lincolnshire Immunisation Strategy. So for all those in favour, if you could raise your hands. Thank you. Do I have any against, any abstentions? Thank you. That is noted. So we now move on to item 8A, the action log of previous decisions. This item is circulated with the Agenda Pack and is on pages 165 to 168 and it's for noting. So unless anybody has any questions or comments, I'd just ask you to have a show of hands if you agree. Thank you. That's noted. Moving then to item 9, which is on pages 169 to 170, and that is the Lincolnshire Health and Wellbeing Board Forward Plan. Obviously, you've got what's before you here, but I'd be interested to know if members have anything they'd like to propose for inclusion in the forward plan. If they do, if they could, I've got Claire here, I've got a couple of members, so we'll start with Claire Raybold. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I just think, given the earlier conversation we had about the neighbourhood plan, that we need to have that in front of us in December, if possible.
That's noted. councillor Anasla?
Just a quick question. It used to be the case that district councils could put forward items for this section. Is it still that the case?
I believe so, yes, it is. Do you have anything you'd wish to put forward?
Not at the moment. But it has happened in the past where people have put forward their health and wellbeing plan, for instance.
Well, okay. Well, if you or your colleagues on the district council, you're welcome to sort of contact Alison Christie and that will be added to the plan. Do I have any other comments? Okay, so if all members are agreed, if I could have a show of hands again. Thank you. That's duly noted. So that brings us to the end of today's meeting of the Lincolnshire Health and Wellbeing Board. And I'd thank you very much for your attendance today. Thank you.